We do have a quorum of four. So, we may have another member or possibly two drag in, but we'll go ahead and call it to order. So, I guess the first item on the agenda is public comment. So, go ahead and open up for a public comment.
Nobody signed up.
Okay. So, we'll go ahead and close public comment and move down to the consent agenda. The commission may request for a consent agenda item to be moved to the regular agenda for presentation and public comment. Otherwise, the consent agenda will be considered in one vote. All items on the consent agenda have been recommended for approval by staff with no opposition received to date. Since some items on the consent agenda may require a public hearing, the commission will accept public comment on any item on the consent agenda in one public hearing. And it looks like the only thing we have is the minutes. So, I will entertain a motion on the minutes.
A motion to approve the minutes for March?
Second.
Motion from Candy and a second from Joe. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Say aye. Aye. Four oh. All right, we'll go ahead and move on to the regular agenda. First item under the regular agenda is conditional uses. The planning commission has final authority for approval of conditional uses and appeals may be directed to city council. We've got first case is CU 1909A, 1825 and 1826 Castle Pines Drive, single member district number one. A request for approval of an amendment to a conditional use, CU 1909, to allow single family houses for two lots at 1825 and 1826 Castle Pines Drive within the office commercial CO and general commercial CG zoning districts.
Austin. Thank you, Austin Reed Planner. This one comes to you out of the Country Club neighborhood. We are in district number one, Tommy Hebert's district. The vision plan here is neighborhood and both properties total about .6 acres. As you said, we have a request to amend a conditional use from 2019 to give it some RS1 standards and then to remove some of the original conditions as well. As you can see, these are two currently vacant lots that are just south of the Wolf Creek Apartments. So, we sent out 15 notices. Received one official in support, not opposed. Did take a phone call from a neighbor as well who seemed to think it was a good idea. So, here's a look at the actual zoning. These aren't zoned residentially like you might expect. They're on the end of a residential street in a cul-de-sac. You can see it's a mix of general commercial right now, office commercial, and then a little bit of residential down there at the bottom as well. A little bit about the original conditional use. So, its purpose was to basically allow the Wolf Creek apartment complex and then control some of its development as well. As you can see from that older map there on the left side, the area of the original conditional use happened to include these two lots, but these two lots were never developed as part of the complex. Some of the older conditions controlled things like fencing, landscaping, buffers, and things like that. So, really, as I said before, what we're looking to do here is just to remove those conditions, substitute them with RS1 standards so that they can develop for single-family residences. With that, we are recommending approval subject to two conditions and one note. The first condition is just for those RS1 standards, the second that they get all the necessary building permits, and then the note is just to specify that we are removing those older conditions. Do you have any questions?
Anybody have any questions for staff?
Could you go back to the map?
Sure.
That one's fine. The first part of Castle Pines, is it residential, did you say?
Yes, ma'am. It is a single-family residential.
Okay.
Okay. Any other questions? So, we'll go ahead and open public comment for this case if you have specific.
Brian Benson?
Would state your name and single member district.
Yeah, Brian Benson. I actually live outside of the city limits, but I have multiple properties in almost every one. Owner of Cleveland Custom Homes, River Fox Construction, just looking at building two spec houses here on these two lots. I know the Tiger Skies out of Lubbock when they built that, did a deal with them to buy those lots, did not realize they were in that CU, but anyway, I've been talking to them and, like I said, I think it's pretty standard, it makes sense. It's fenced inside there for residential. I guess it was just part of the original development. When they did that, they just left that open, I don't know, for another possible entryway or what. But, anyway, I'm here to answer any questions. Have you guys got any?
Anybody have any questions for Brian?
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
What's that?
That's it for this.
Okay.
Can I just ask one question?
Yeah, if you would come up to the podium and just state your name and address or single member district.
Thank you. I'm Perry Buck and I live at 1829, which is by one of these lots, and I called and spoke to, I thought I did. Excellent conversation. Myself and the neighbor across the street and another neighbor, we thought that these lots were, we thought they were already residential. We thought that whenever the fence went up and the apartments were done, that it was over. But, I didn't mail in my form. Do I need to say that I'm in approval of this? We're delighted to make, for y'all to make the change. That's all I have.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Buck. That's kind of what I would, what I would think for anybody who lives on that street would be, you know, would like to see it finished out with single-family houses. So, makes sense. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Do we have any others? Okay. So, we'll go ahead and close public comment and open up for discussion or motion from the group.
A move to approve as presented.
Second.
Got a motion from Joe, second from Candy. Is there any discussion? Go ahead and call a vote. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? That passes four zero. All right. Second conditional use case is CU 2508, 419 North Jackson, single member district number four. A request for a conditional use to allow a short-term rental in a two-family residential RS2 zoning district.
Good morning, Ray Limeberry Planner. And this is 419 North Jackson. It is in the central neighborhood, District Four, Lucy Gonzalez. It is RS2. The vision plan is neighborhood, and they are requesting a conditional use to allow a short-term rental. They did, I did not mark it on the slide, but they did pass their safety inspection. So, this is the central neighborhood. Right now, we have eight that are current. It is the renewal period though, so that number could change, but at the moment, they are all current, and the blue star is where this new one will go. We did mail out 23 notices. We received one in support and zero in opposition. This is the zoning map. It is all RS2 in the yellow and then general commercial in the pink, so it is right next door to the general commercial. So, staff is recommending approval of the conditional use. We are also recommending that since it is the current renewal period, we are recommending that they are required to renew by June 1st of 2026. With that, is there any questions?
Could you pull back up the map with the stars of the other conditional, or SDRs, I guess?
Mm-hmm.
None of those are within 500 feet?
546 feet is the closest one.
Do they have a local operator?
They do.
They passed their safety inspection. You said they have adequate parking?
Yep.
Okay.
Is it on the side?
Yeah, it is. It is on the other side.
Okay. Does anybody else have any questions for Ray?
Is the applicant here?
I do not see him.
I just noticed it was Baptist Memorial Ministries. There was a particular, I mean, I know it's short-term rental, but are they using it for, do you have any idea?
Not that I know of. He was pretty active with us and he did have some, he had something built, well, the original owner that he bought it from had something built without a permit, and he worked with building and they got it fixed, and so he is pretty active with us.
Okay. Does anybody else have anything?
And there's no public comment.
Okay. Thanks, Ray. So, since there's no public comment, we'll go ahead and open up for discussion from the group or a motion.
Motion to approve as presented by the staff.
Second.
Okay. Got a motion from Liz, second from Joe. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. That passes four zero. That'll bring us to rezonings and comprehensive plan amendments. City council has final authority for approval of rezonings and amendments to the comprehensive plan. First one is PD 2501 Baptist Retirement Center, SMD number three. A request for approval of a zone change from neighborhood commercial CN, general commercial CG, single-family residential RS1, and two-family residential RS2 zoning districts to a plan development PD 2501 district with a base zoning of low-rise multifamily RM1 for an assisted living community as it relates to, and its related amenities.
Thank you, Austin Reed Planner. This one comes to you out of the Reagan and Paulan neighborhoods. It's districts number three and four for Harry Thompson, Lucy Gonzalez. The vision plan is a mix of neighborhood and campus institutional, and I think there's six properties total, and it's about 70 acres. What we have is a request to rezone to a PD district. If you remember last year, some of you remember, we had the Village East Retirement Community where they were looking to subdivide, and they first had to come through with a plan development district. This is something similar to that. I do want to make a quick clarification on our staff report. We did notify for these two lots, but those two smaller lots were included in the legal description. I just wanted to make sure you knew that they were included. So, here's a look at the notifications. We sent out 119. As far as I'm aware, we only received one in support and one that was opposed. Here's a look at the current zoning and the vision plan, the zoning on the left-hand side. You can see it's a mix of general commercial there, neighborhood commercial on the top right, and then the farthest left property is a mix of RS1, and then that darker yellow is RS2. You have a little bit of RS1 down there in the bottom right as well for those smaller properties. The vision plan, it's mostly campus institutional with neighborhood in the top right. So, here's a look at our actual PD standards, the development standards that we're changing. Number one just establishes a base zoning of RM1 in order kind of to make way for the variety of structure types that are on the ground there today. Number two is specifically allowing the offices, amenities, complexes, things like that that serve the neighborhood. Number three is our table. So, this table in the paragraph below it, I ripped straight from our ordinance. The only things that are really changing are those that are highlighted in red. It mostly pertains to the standards for a single-family and two-family units so that what's there today can be allowed. Number four is for their five-story high-rise complex. It wouldn't ordinarily be allowed under the RM1 base, so we're making sure that that is explicitly allowed. And then number five is kind of just allowing us to approve minor deviations in the future without having to come back here. So, a little bit about our staff rationale. We think it's compatible with the surrounding area, and it's surrounded by other residential districts, and there's no real substantial change in land use here. We think there's a community need for senior living, and this will continue to allow as much, and there's not going to be any adverse effects on the natural environment. So, here's a look at their concept plan. I know that's a little bit messy. I've tried my best to lay it over kind of with their preliminary plats that they provided to give you an idea of what everything's going to look like when it's split out. So, with that, we are recommending approval subject to the following applicable regulations, and I'm not going to run through all that again, but that's what I just ran through a couple slides ago. Do you have any questions?
Could you just walk us through kind of the reasoning for why they need to go PD first before they start to subdivide?
So, under our zoning ordinance, the lots that they're creating, it wouldn't fit for like single-family houses and two-family houses. They would be too small of a lot under our current zoning ordinance, so we have to create a plan development district. That would allow those lot sizes, those setbacks, things like that.
And then those individual lots will still be under the PD, they could just be sold off to different owners.
Right, correct.
Does anybody else have any questions?
This is a lot of change for this development that's been there for quite a while. I think I know some of the reasoning behind it, but with the PD, they're going to be able to do everything they need to do under this as you've presented it?
They should be able to. I mean, any, so basically what we're doing is allowing everything that's there today, and then with some of the conditions, I've kind of tried to make room for anything that they want to do in the future, maybe with more amenities or more residences, because I think they did come in maybe a year or so ago about wanting to do more, and we kind of brought up, you might need to get the zoning straight at some point. And now that they need to subdivide, we really need to do the PD for it, so.
I noticed that there was one response that was in opposition to it. Did they give a reason why?
They did not give any reasoning. They just checked the box.
Anybody else have anything for Austin? Do we have any public comment? Go ahead and open up public comment.
We have the applicant, Russell Gully.
Good morning, Russell. With SKG, we would ask for your approval of this as presented. We've worked with the city, I guess historically in the past, some time back, and then this is part of the process. We will be coming with you with a replat of this area to create those lots, so we wanted to make sure we had a zoning that our plat would, could meet those standards. So, that's kind of how we developed, if you will, the lot sizes and areas based on kind of how the plat would lay out and how our lots would lay out, fitting how the homes are built, and then where there's not a home, how potentially we could fit. There's a few potential infill areas that they may or may not ever put a home on those, so I'd be happy to answer any other questions that you may have.
Anybody have any questions for Russell? Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Russell.
Aaron Hargit.
Good morning.
Good morning. Aaron Hargit, District One, but I'm Senior Executive Director for Baptist Retirement Community, so I appreciate you hearing this request, and as Austin mentioned, we, this is part of our opportunity to get obsolete zoning corrected, both on our behalf and the city's behalf, to allow us to be able to get permits to build or change as we need to.
Any questions? Thank you, sir.
And that's it.
Okay. So, we'll close public comment and open it up for discussion. What makes the group? I think, I mean, there's obviously a lot of different types of uses as this has been built out over time, and so this is a way to kind of allow all of those under one zoning so that it can be split out and replatted, I guess, to where you've got individual lots and they're not, they're not non-conforming.
Yeah.
So, makes sense to me. Anybody have any other thoughts or?
I think it makes sense, so I'll make a motion to approve as presented.
Okay.
Second.
Got a motion from Joe and a second from Liz. Is there any discussion? With that, I'll go ahead and call for a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. That is four zero. All right. Next case is PD 2502, Jackson and Town and Country Drive, SMD number one. A request for approval of a zone change of 2.81 acres located at Jackson Street and Town and Country Drive, Block Two, from general heavy commercial CGCH to a plan development, PD 2502 zoning district with a base zoning of RM1 to allow modified setbacks for multifamily development.
Good morning, Kim Garney, Planning and Development Services Administrator. We're in District One, Tommy Hebert, in the Rio Vista neighborhood. As you said, the current zoning of this plot is general commercial, heavy commercial, and the developer is wanting to change the zoning to allow for low-rise multifamily housing. We sent 13 notices, one in favor and one in opposition. Neither of them said why. It was just a box check. You'll see on the left, that is the current zoning. So, it's mostly commercial and some light manufacturing in this area. However, we do have these swaths of land in this area that have been vacant that are ready for development. On the right, you'll see the picture of the vacant land right now. Okay, so, we're recommending approval of this plan development, and the specific setbacks will be as follows. A five-foot setback on the side yards, 10-foot setback for the front on Town and Country Court, and a 10-foot setback on the rear for Jackson Street. So, we will have an RM1 base zoning, and the reason for these modified setbacks are this is a local developer who is developing in areas around town that maybe have been sitting vacant, and he knows that for him and for his developments that these modified setbacks work. So, that's why he's requesting the plan development and these specific setbacks.
Any questions?
Thank you.
Do we have any public comment on this one, Ray?
We have, you want Erica? Erica first. Erica Wilde.
Good morning.
Good morning. Erica Wilde with Wilde Engineering and Surveying. We just asked that you approve as presented, and I'm here for any questions.
Okay. Any questions for Erica?
The front will be on Town and Country. Is that what I'm understanding?
Yes, is that correct then? Yes. Yes.
How many different units are proposed?
Oh, I believe there's 30.
30.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Zane, did you want to? No, okay. Brian May? Okay, then no.
Okay. So, we'll go ahead and close public comment. Ray, could you flip back to the overhead view of the lot? So, what's going to front Town and Country? Okay.
Where that cul-de-sac is. And if you remember, or if you've driven out this way, up, further up Jackson is some other apartments and a hotel, and then further this way on Jackson is the Walmart and that new Dollar Tree little shopping center.
Okay.
Also apartments back in there?
Yes. Oh, yeah, and across the street from Walmart is also apartments.
And that branch of the Red Arroyo, there's a process going on that that's going to be dedicated to the city. It is floodway and floodplain, and so there is a buffer zone there that's pretty significant. And Ms. Albert, you might have been asking about density as far as how many units. It's being 2.8 acres. Our density in RM1 can be up to 25 units per acre, and if their proposal's around 30 units per acre, they're, they're well under the density mark, and so we think this is a project that is going to help do some infill in this area, continue to use some vacant land, that we certainly need this style of housing in our community.
Does anybody else have any questions for staff or discussion? I'll go ahead and, I think I closed public comment, but if I haven't, I'll go ahead and close it again. So, if there's any discussion or a motion?
I make a motion to approve as presented by staff.
Second.
Motion by Liz and a second by Joe. Any further discussion? If not, then I'll go ahead and call for a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? That passes four zero. Okay, so, next case is Z 2516, 517 West 18th Street, lots four through 10, SMD number four. A request for a zone change from low-rise multifamily residential RM1 zoning district to general commercial GC located at 517 West 18th Street, lots four through 10.
Ray Limeberry Planner. And this one is in the Blackshear neighborhood. It is District Four, Lucy Gonzalez. The vision plan is transitional. It is 1.165 acres, and they are requesting to go from RM1 multifamily to general commercial. We did mail out 17 notices. We mailed out 17 notices, and over the weekend, we received two, three, three in favor. They are, oops, I hit the wrong button. One, let me see. So, it is over here, 605 and 607, and then the last one is 1711? Oh, over here, okay. So, it is these two and this one that are in favor. And then this is looking down 18th Street. Bryant is over here, and then this, this picture over here is standing about halfway in on the lot, just looking out at Bryant again. So, this is the zoning on my left and the vision plan on the right. It is currently RM1 with some general commercial and neighborhood commercial and then residential around it. The vision plan is transitional, which that allows for some transition between residential and commercial. Staff rationale, surrounding area is currently commercial, and it does front a major arterial, so approval of the zone change will also help develop a vacant lot, and it appears to be no immediate adverse effect on the natural environment. So, staff is recommending partial approval. We are recommending partial approval for lots four through seven, which front Bryant Boulevard as general commercial, and then staff is recommending lots eight through 10 that are, I'm going to go back. So, I'm going to use this one as an example. It's about, it will match up with this lot, just about. It's about 150 feet in that we are recommending neighborhood commercial, just so it kind of is a lesser commercial right next to residential. We want a buffer there. Oop, went too far. And the note is that any development will require either a site plan or dev plan. With that, is there any questions?
So, lots four through seven front Bryant.
Correct.
And the eight through 10 are toward the back, which is where the residential is off of the backside of that lot. What about, well, I know it doesn't matter right now, but it has general commercial that is in front of some of the residential, so is, I guess what I'm asking, I'm trying to figure out, we're putting the back as, what'd you say?
Neighborhood commercial.
It's kind of hard to see, but in the, on the left, on our left zoning map, you can see that that back half of that property that's next door to it?
Yes, right here.
That is zone CN now.
Okay. That's what I was trying to.
So, basically, that would just carry over to this next lot, is the way I understand it, right?
Yes, correct.
I understand it now. Thank you.
So, they're obviously already using this for CN?
Correct.
Or CG, sorry.
Truck World has been using it as part of their display area for their trucks. They, if they continue to use it, they will have to pave, and that's why I kind of took a picture on my right. They are not using it so far anyways, where the commercial, the neighborhood commercial would be. would be. If they would like to use that back half, they would just have to come and do a conditional use. They already have a, go back to this one. They have a conditional use on the back portion of the property that they have, so they could always amend it, or they have a special use, not a conditional use.
There's some additional requirements?
So there would be some.
Like screening, I think.
Correct.
And just to kind of shield it from the housing that's right next to it.
Correct. Yeah. If you see, if you notice, there's like this little right here foundation that used to be there, and then that's what is right here. So you can see, they're only using the front portion of the lot at the moment.
Do we know they won't use more or just?
Correct. They may possibly, but they would be required to come in.
Okay. So.
And it's a possibility, they do not own this lot. The current owner is looking at leasing it to them, possibly selling it to them, or selling it to somebody else. So there is a possibility that they may not even be there.
Retail auto sales, like car lot, is allowed on CG?
Correct, in CG.
And not on CN.
Correct.
Good.
Without a conditional use or a special use.
Good. Okay, everybody understand what's proposed?
Yeah. As long as it's separated, the way you have it, the first lots on Bryant and the back lots the other, so.
Yes.
Protect the residential side.
Okay.
And there is the applicant Billy Dewitt for public comment.
Okay. Open up public comment.
Good morning. My name is Billy Dewitt, and I live in single-member District 6. And as has been stated already, this has been a vacant lot for years. When my husband purchased it, he was intent on building some low to moderate housing on those lots. And because my job was transferring me around, we just never got a chance to do that. And so, so much commercial has gone up around there that it just didn't seem like a good idea to, you know, put housing in there. We thought we'd try to get it rezoned to commercial so that, you know, it would fit in what else is going on on Bryant Boulevard. One of the requests, and I certainly thank Ray for working with me and explaining it all to me. My request, our request this morning, is a reconsideration of doing lots 8 through 10 for neighborhood commercial, and just do lots 9 and 10, and let it go general commercial from 4 through 8. And then neighborhood commercial, lots 9 and 10. Because there is a street, Hudson Street, also that separates this property from residences. And if you look at lots 601 and 603, I believe both of those right now are vacant. And so, you know, that's the only change that we're requesting, is that the general commercial go lots 4 through 8, and neighborhood commercial, lots 9 and 10.
So just so you guys are aware, that would be about 100 feet in instead of 150 feet.
You have a map that shows the lots? Where we can see them?
Not on my slides, but I do on my computer. I don't know if I'm allowed to bring my laptop. Am I allowed to show them my laptop? No.
Okay.
Any other questions or?
I don't think so. Thank you for being here.
Thank you.
That's it for public comment.
Okay. So we'll close public comment and open it up for discussion amongst the group.
So if we do 4 through 8, that's five lots, all five face Bryant, or is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay.
And so, as Ray mentioned, these are all legally platted lots there. And so they were all platted at 50 foot wide.
Oh, okay.
And so that is 100 feet, as Ms. Dewitt mentioned, from Hudson Street. It would be 100-foot buffer. Staff recommended 150, which is one more lot. She's asking to move that back so that there's more general commercial towards the front, one lot more.
Okay.
Anybody else have any thoughts or comments?
For reference on the screen that you're looking at there, if you look in the tan or the neighborhood commercial, and you see the number 522, that would represent one more lot. And if you split between 522 and 526, that's roughly where that line would be back to the west. That would be neighborhood commercial.
Well, I'll make a motion to approve this request for a zone change to the general commercial in lots 4 through 8, and lots 9 and 10 being neighborhood commercials.
Okay. Okay, so a motion by Candy to change lots 4 through 8 to CG and lots 9 and 10 to CN. And a second from Liz. So all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And none opposed, so that passes 4-0. Okay, next case is Z 2515, 3013, 3017, 3021, 3025, and 3029 Waco Street, SMD number 2. A request for a zone change from general commercial, CG zoning, District 2, low-rise multifamily residential RM1 located at 3013, 3017, 3021, 3025, and 3029 Waco Street.
Ray Limeberry, planner. So if you can also read in the plat below it, it's going to be two separate votes, but it'll go with this.
Okay, so we'll go ahead and read in the subdivision plat, number 1 on our agenda, RP 2506, Hatcher Edition Block 67. SMD number 2, a request to replat Hatcher Edition Block 67, lots 4 through 8 into one lot located at 3013, 3017, 3021, 3025, and 3029 Waco Street. And two variance requests for paving width and curb and gutter along both Waco Street and Guthrie Street have been received.
Okay. So Ray Limeberry, planner. This is in the Bluffs neighborhood, District 2, Tom Thompson. And it is neighborhood center as a vision plan. And it is .735 acres. They are requesting to rezone from general commercial to low-rise multifamily, and they are plating all those lots as one. So we did mail out 21 notices, and over the weekend, we received two in opposition. One doesn't say anything, the other one says, "Rudy from Code Compliance is over Waco enough with complaints from residents. It's commercial, leave it at that." So this is a picture standing on Waco, looking out towards Houston Hart. So the zoning is on the left. It is general commercial, and it is neighborhood center, which allows multifamily residential and a light commercial. The surrounding area is a blend of residential and commercial, is how staff feels, and it will help develop a vacant lot. This lot has been vacant for quite some time. So staff is recommending approval on the rezoning. And then I'm going to skip ahead. And so it is five lots going into one. And this is what the plat would look like. They have requested a variance. I'm going to go back to my picture. There is no curb and gutter. They have requested a variance to not have to do curb and gutter, and staff is recommending denial on that. They also requested a variance on paving width that has been administratively approved. Let's see. And the part of the area is Houston Hart frontage, which is Tex dot, and then Waco and Guthrie. Like I said, the paving width has been administratively approved because it does meet the minimum. And then the curb and gutter, staff is recommending denial. Some more pictures along the side, so you can see, neither side has curb and gutter. So staff is recommending approval of the plat and denial of the curb and gutter variance on the plat.
Sidewalks?
Sidewalks would be required. Oh, I have a second one. Yes, sidewalks are required. That's number five.
Okay.
Is this the curb and gutter on all sides?
It would be on the Waco and Guthrie side. The other side is Tex dot.
Tex dot, okay.
So I'll go back to the zoning first, if you want to discuss the zoning first. Oh, I went the wrong way. Sorry. I usually put the slides together. Staff is recommending approval for the rezoning.
Okay. Anybody have any other questions for Ray?
Ray, what is the business in the lower right-hand corner? The little triangular tract there on the east side, I guess?
This, like this one right there?
I saw Texas windshield somewhere on one of your maps. Windshield repair.
I was just trying to have a point of reference.
Did you say this is the Bluffs neighborhood?
Yes.
It seemed like it.
And then right behind it, it looks like there's a house, or right next to it, or that 3009 is?
Yes. This one is a house. And then these are warehouses, I believe, storage facilities. So these are commercial right here.
And their plan, because of one lot, is multifamily? Is that correct?
Yes, multifamily. Similar to, I did not do a picture, but further down this way is Houston Street, and there are some multifamily residentials right there that you guys approved recently, a few months ago, it might have been six months ago, maybe longer. They're currently already built out.
Houston, isn't Houston on the other side of Houston Hart?
No.
So it's?
Houston, like, starts right around in here, somewhere.
Okay. Anybody else have any questions for Ray? We have public comment?
Yes. Erica?
Good morning again.
Good morning. I am Erica Wilde with Wilde Engineering and Surveying. I just asked that you approve as presented, except with, to consider the denial of the curb and gutter variance. I really just don't see the purpose of having curb and gutter on one side of the street. However, I know we have to kind of go as we can, so that's what I ask, if you'll just consider that. Thank you.
Thank you.
And if you have any questions, let me know.
I will say the city engineer is here, if you have any questions on the variances.
Yeah.
Good morning.
Good morning. I just wanted to get you a few extra steps in.
Sure, appreciate that. Kevin Page, city engineer.
Yeah, could you just walk us through, I guess, the thought process or rationale for the requirement for curb and gutter on these as it's proposed?
Standard requirement for curb and gutter is that it provides a structural boundary to the street, particularly in residential areas where you have vehicles coming on and off frequently. Asphalt likes to break, right there where the street joins property line. That's one reason. Other is drainage. Other is to be consistent with Tex dot on that side, it's got curb and gutter. The development down the street at Hassel in Houston, I think, is also, it's got curb and gutter. If you drove by and saw that, that's consistent with residential property, sidewalks as well.
Okay. Do they have any more questions?
So did you say the properties, 3009 through 3001, do those currently have curb and gutter?
No.
Okay. I think that's it? Anybody else? Thank you, sir.
You're welcome.
Do we have any more public comment?
We do have two, but they're wanting to talk on the plat. Unless you want to talk on the zoning also?
No, the zoning, the plat.
So the zoning, no, but the plat, yes.
Okay, so I've already read both those in. Are we gonna, yeah, let's go ahead.
You want to vote it? Okay. Rocky, if you want to come on in.
Rock Temple in single-member District 6. That's what I had a question on, was the variance of the curb and the gutter. The paving there existing is less than 28 feet. And then their property pin is about 16 feet from the existing paving. And so, on Guthrie and Waco. And so I was trying to figure out where their entrance is going to be, and if they did put in a sidewalk or curb and gutter, where they were going to lie between that 28-foot of paving and that 16-foot to the property line. Me and my neighbor own eight properties adjacent from it, across the street. And so ours are zone commercial and neighborhood commercial. And so we were just worried about 28-foot street, parking on the street. And by the time you do that on both sides, you're talking about 8 to 10 feet for emergency to get through. And so that was my question. Thank you.
Thank you.
And then there's Matt, is it Wymore? Okay. Then, nope, we're good.
Okay.
Oh, Zane, I'm sorry, and Zane.
Okay.
Zane Willard, and I'm not a single-member district, I'm out of the county. I'm the developer on the one down the street as well on Houston. And part of our, just our rationale while we're doing these, I don't know exactly, I'm sure when Houston Hart was put in, this was cut off right there. We've had, you know, we've heard the saying for the last 10 years, affordable housing, and that's kind of our intent here. I don't really know what the definition of affordable is. I guess it's on the eyes of the beholder. Density is the one thing that we can do in order to make it a bit more affordable, and we're trying to take some of these properties that have just been set in idle, I think, from the city's standpoint, to put something in on the tax rolls that's a bit more valuable and provides more tax revenue to the city. I don't know if Erica, I thought she was going to put some pictures up there, but I have no opposition to the curb and gutter. Make the property better. As far as access, the way we currently got it set up, it'll be on Waco Street. So, and there will be enough parking. I think the, what is it, 1.75? We try to get a little over 2, so there ought, we're looking right now at 10 units, so there ought to be 22 to 23 parking spots, so everybody has a spot to park on the property. And most of the time, what we've been doing, and we intend to do the same thing, instead of a paved parking lot, we're doing a concrete parking lot, so you're pretty much done once the day you put it in. There's no maintenance or anything down the road, it just makes a nicer product. And we've And we've, shockingly, we've got a huge demand for these, just because it fits a budget that people can afford. And, do y'all have any questions to me?
No, that's, good information, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay, so we'll close public comment and open it up for discussion or motion.
Well, so we're only gonna have curb and gutter on part of that road? I know it helps with drainage, and that is a good thing, 'cause it would move the water down the road instead of across the property, but if we only have it on part of it, then it's gonna force it onto the property, possibly. Just thoughts, I don't know.
So, there's three lots.
What did we do on Houston? Do you remember?
It has curb and gutter.
Is it the whole thing, though? Yeah. That's the only difference on this, is only doing part of it would be challenging, or it might cause more problems.
Well, I think the hope is, is the, if or when the remainder of that street builds out, you'd finish it out, but who knows when that, what happened? But I do think that it holds, it does hold the pavement together. I mean, at least on that part of the street, so, I mean, I understand your point, too, though.
Do y'all feel comfortable moving forward with a motion on the rezoning? And then maybe more discussion on the plat?
Well, I can make a motion on the zone change from CG to RM1, low-rise multifamily.
Second.
Okay, we got a motion from Candy on the zoning change, and a second from Joe. Is there any discussion, any further discussion on that? If not, then I'll call for a vote, and please, if all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? It's four zero. So, we can, I guess, continue discussion on the?
Variance.
The plat.
Could the? I guess my question would be on the variance, because it's only a portion of the street, the larger portion of that block. That's the question that you had, too. The curb and gutter and sidewalks. I wonder if the owner, if the developer would come back to the microphone. And my question would be, how does that affect either way? Whether the variance is allowed or not, your design, your construction, your thinking about what you're doing with this zone change?
I guess I'm not fully understanding the question.
Because the, the staff is wanting to deny the variance, which would be the curb and gutters and all of that. It's only a portion of the street. There's a portion that wouldn't be done because it's not part of this land that you have. Just what, what's your? How does that affect what you're building, I guess?
We could probably ask Kevin. My understanding is, so we're gonna do sidewalks along the Waco Street, 'cause that's the, that was changed a couple of years ago, if you do anything, multifamily have to do sidewalks. So, in essence, we're almost doing the curb and the gutter. We're gonna block the drainage, no matter what, whatever's trying to come on the property. So, unless you deleted the sidewalks, you're really not helping the cause. From good point myself, I don't know what it does as far as where the water goes when it hits there. It oughta come around and end up on Waco, I mean, on the frontage road over there. But, you know, there's the one house right there at 3,009. We're not opposed to putting it in. I mean, we're gonna put the sidewalks in anyway, and so curb and gutter is not a big addition to the cost. And I told Ray that earlier, so.
Thank you, that's exactly the answer, I mean, information I needed. Thank you.
Thank you.
I mean, I just wanna piggyback on kinda what Joe said. That was, you know, my main question was if it's not located, the curb and gutter is not located anywhere else along that street. Other than what you said, Luke, of, you know, obviously protecting the pavement there, is there the benefit? Are we getting the benefit that those two different types of structures are supposed to provide?
Well, I think, you know, he mentioned putting a concrete parking lot in. And honestly, that may help feed curb and gutter with the apron and access. Just make it a little bit easier to define. And also protect the, you know, his parking lot he's putting in, too, so. I don't know. It sounds like he's not opposed to it, and it's not really gonna impact the cost greatly, since they're already having to put sidewalks in, as you mentioned, and going ahead and doing a concrete parking lot, too, just to make it a little nicer and hold up a little better, so.
Can you go back to the picture?
These ones? Or the overhead?
Let's go to the overhead, please. Yeah, that'll work. I wanna make a motion to approve
You're making?
With a variance for the curb and gutter.
I'll second.
So, the motion from Joe to allow the variance for curb and gutter, as requested by the applicant, and a second from Liz. Is there any further discussion on that? I'll go ahead and call for a vote on the motion on the floor. All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Aye. That passes three to one. Okay.
Second case under subdivision plats is RP 2507, Angelo Heights Edition, Block 179, SMD number five. A request for a second replat of Angelo Heights Edition, Block 179, into one lot for the purpose of low-rise multifamily. A variance request for paving width along Van Buren, and a variance request for no curb and gutter along Van Buren and West Borogard has been requested.
Thank you, Chairman. Aaron Vinoy, Director of Planning Development Services. This is a second replat of Angelo Heights Edition, Block 179. There's three lots there that they're going to combine into one lot. It's District 5, Karen Hesse-Smith, neighborhood is Central. The zoning currently is general commercial, heavy commercial, and the vision plan is Neighborhood Center. So, it's hard to tell on this, but we turned this just to get a little bit bigger, but Van Buren is right here. As many of y'all know, with Borogard being right here, this actually is a five-way intersection that signaled. And so, this is just a tricky intersection, is all I'm trying to say. But with this plat, they're looking at, they're gonna be dedicating a little piece here that goes to the city for right-of-way, and they kinda curved that off. This is a text dot right-of-way over here, and it is, satisfies our current ordinances with text dot. So, here's just a couple of pictures. Again, Borogard's a major arterial, it is text dot. Text dot is responsible for granting access, as well as authority on curb and gutter on West Borogard. Van Buren in this area is actually a minor collector. The paving width is approved administratively. It does meet our minimum of more than 26 feet. The variance request is for curb and gutter along Van Buren. So, we did, I did take a couple of pictures, not the greatest pictures, but as you can see here, this actually has a, what we'd call a paved apron. It is asphalt paved, it is not concrete paved apron, from edge of road up to, into their private property. The property line has just passed, somewhere in this area, just past those utility poles. And you can see it both goes all the way to the extent of Van Buren on that side. So, again, we do have a five-way intersection. You can see that it is signaled there. Things coming in there. We did go ahead and take photographs along West Borogard. Text dot has a project in design, about 30% design for new sidewalks in this area, so we will not be giving that as a requirement through here, as text dot will be coming through. The biggest challenge is for them to work with text dot for access, where is appropriate access considered for that intersection that's down there? And so, we'll just be keeping that in mind as we go through the site plan. I didn't have a great overhead. 'Cause I'm not as talented as my team that can make those maps. They're much more talented than I am. But there is kind of a natural entrance back here at the back, that's a ramp that comes back here. It actually turns and comes in the middle of the property. We'll be working with the applicant, as well as text dot, to address approaches and parking and things like that. There may be an opportunity even to have that as back here, and have parking at the back, and have the actual structures a little more forward, so that they're able to utilize more of that property for density. But that will come forward with their site plan, and staff will be reviewing those things. So, again, this here, they do have a variance request on this curb and gutter here. I know there's been some discussions with city engineer of what the appropriate is. Again, this is a major road. You can see just, it's hard to see, but you can see across the street, there is curb and gutter on the property across the street. Of course, it does have an apron with a driveway there. There is not curb and gutter until you pass this block, and then you go further north, there is curb and gutter. Our assumption is, maybe it was taken out when this was paved over back many years ago, and there used to probably be a business here or some structure there that is no longer there. With that, city staff does recommend approval of the plat with three conditions and one note. Currently, city staff is denial, is supportive of denial of the variance request for no curb and gutter along Van Buren Street, with our standard comments of wastewater's taxes and the utilities. And then, again, the variance for the curb and gutter. With that, if you have any questions for me?
Any questions for Aaron?
I don't have any.
Okay, so, just to make sure I understand, on the the plat, so they would have to submit a financial guarantee if they didn't go ahead and put in curb and gutter?
Correct, just like any other infrastructure, that if they wanted to go ahead and file the plat, whether it's wastewater, or water lines, or paving, same thing with curb and gutter, they could submit a financial guarantee or other financial guarantee to get the plat filed and get started on construction of structures, but that then also guarantees that that infrastructure comes in at some point.
Okay. Okay. Anybody else? All right, thank you, Aaron. We have any public comment?
Erica Willdie.
Okay.
Hi again.
Good morning, again.
We ask that you approve as presented, being that there's curb and gutter on the other side, edge protection and all of that, the applicant's okay with putting in the curb and gutter here, so, just, yes, have you approved as presented?
Thank you.
Zane? Zane Willard.
We wore the same shirt today, we caught. So, once again, I'm not opposed to the curb and gutter. We're gonna do whatever it takes to make it nice, and that's a little different deal than the other one over there. I think, for those of us old enough, I think that was the old carpet shop that caved in during the hailstorm in 95, so, just a little take you back in time. Part of my whole thought process is, and I, I mean, I'm stuck in St. Angel, I have no intention of leaving. My kids wanna come back here. And, you know, kinda make St. Angel beautiful again. When you drive down one of our major streets and you just see abandoned land, you know, I mean, there's a, there's a need for this kinda stuff. Have a little different intent on this one. What we're gonna do is more for intermediate rentals, doctors, nurses, that kinda thing. We have a huge demand for that kinda thing, and it's close, it's downtown, it's, you're not downtown, but you're close enough downtown there. You can be in a few, you know, a couple of seconds. Across the street, you have some older hotels, you know, probably need a little updating, you know, but anyway, you know that the kinda, the general vibe over there, as far as the curb and gutter, we don't have an issue with it. We'll do the best thing for the thing. We do have a couple of site plans. I think what Aaron pointed out, it's just working with text dot to get there where they want us to put the curb at, or the curb cut at. But, any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Then that, is it?
Yeah. All right, so we'll close public comment and open up for discussion, and a motion from the group.
I don't have any discussion. I can make a motion to approve as
Perfect.
presented by staff.
Second.
Got a motion from Liz, and a second from Joe to approve as presented. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. That is four zero. Next case is FP 2505, Preston Wood, Section 9, SMD number 6. A request to final plat, Preston Wood Edition, Section 9 being 7.4, 77 acres located west of Pendleton Parkway and extending Trippington Way.
Make sure my neck works, so I can turn and look for that. Thank you, Chairman. Aaron Vinoy, Director of Planning Development Services. This is Preston Wood, Section 9. This is an area that is going under, undergoing annexation, as well as a zone change that y'all approved last month, is in front of city council. This is an extension of the Preston Wood area or neighborhood, the subdivision in that area. Right here is Trippington Way, and that's going to come down this way and create some single-family housing along Trippington Way. So, it is in the Bonham neighborhood, it is in District 6, Mr. Larry Millard. It is RS1 cur, or will be RS1, once it comes into the city limits and as long as the zoning gets passed with city council. And then this is request for approval for the final plat. So, again, this is part of the area out there. You can kinda see where it's south of the Boulevard, continuing to move a little closer to Highway 67, Southland Boulevard over there to the, to the right side of the screen. Here's the plat, again, creating those single-family lots. You can see that they will have a detention area up here, tract A. It will also start to begin this road right here, and I think that's Brighton Hill. They will have an alleyway with a temporary turnaround right here for circulation, particularly of emergency vehicles, as well as if they have rear entry garages, they will have that alleyway for that as well. With that, staff recommends approval of the final plat with the standard six conditions. Of course, the service, the mains for water and sewer, the services for those, the delinquents' taxes, of course, the city streets for those areas, a drainage study as needed. And then, the last thing that, this plat would not be eligible to be filed until they actually get the RS1 zoning, very similar to what, while we went through the zoning with get the RS1 zoning, very similar to what, while we went through the zoning with the project on Main. The lots just need to conform to the zoning ordinance. We know that the second reading of that is May 6th, and so that would just be the last condition. The other item on here is that they will work with our engineering department on the temporary turnaround. There are some items in our subdivision ordinance about phase developments and working through that with our engineering to guarantee that those things, if the developer was to ever walk away, that they actually become a permanent structure of our street system. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Do you have any questions for Aaron or staff?
Go back one more. No, sorry, the other direction. Now, this isn't showing that whole full length, correct?
No, that red box is a little bigger than the actual plat itself. You can see it's, and I forgot the distance. Maybe the applicant knows the distance, but it's much shorter than that red box.
I was thinking that. I just wanted to make sure.
We got a little excited.
Just making sure. I didn't think it was that.
No, that, that red box is not quite representative. It, it comes right about in this area rather here. It's not quite here as far as you think. Yes, sir. Thanks for pointing that out. Appreciate it.
All right. Anybody else?
Russell Gully.
Good morning, Russell with SKG. We would ask for your approval of this as presented, but would ask condition four be amended? It, it talks about temporary turnaround. And I don't know if it shows in the, at the end of that, it talks about temporary turnaround shall be constructed to permanent standards for streets and alleys. And then it references LDSO 10, Section 6 or V1. And I have not been able to find that section in the code of ordinances looking online. I don't know if that was a typo or what. But if, if you go to Chapter 9 of the LDSO, Section 3, it talks about, under Streets and Roads, temporary turnarounds. It, it talks about that. So I guess our ask would be to, would be to amend that, the verbiage of condition four to say temporary turnarounds shall be constructed per ordinance or something, not, not some specificity there, because I think the LDSO has some, a little bit of different verbiage on how you deal with temporary turnaround. So.
Russell, can you tell me what, what did it say again?
Well, I think it was a typo. I think it's meant to say Chapter 5, Section 6 for phased developments.
So, so yes, if it's Chapter 5, then I don't know if that's the exact verbiage because I didn't look at it. But there's also Chapter 9 that talks about temporary turnarounds. And it has a paragraph towards the end of it that talks about, "In both circumstances described above, this subdivider shall pave the temporary turnaround area in accordance with ordinary street construction specifications as well as to dimensional standards ordinarily required of pavement on turnarounds, but without curbs besides said street pavement." And so I think they're very clear in the ordinance. It says that curbs are not required for temporary turnarounds. And so just want to make sure that, that we're not required when it says to permanent street standards. That contradicts where it talks about not having to have curbs besides said pavement. So I just want to make sure we're not being held to a higher standard.
So you're saying you don't, you're making sure we're not saying you got to curb that turnaround, correct?
Yeah.
Yes.
You don't have a problem with the street, just the turnaround?
Yes, sir. Correct, correct.
And I agree with that too. I, that's the way I read it, is he would not have to do
curb around that turnaround.
Okay. So, so do we take, I guess, or add, maybe take the ambiguity out of it, just to say that it's in, in line with ordinance in our motion as opposed to citing the specific reference to some chapter? Okay.
Absolutely. That would, that would be our request. And other than that, we would ask for your approval.
Cool.
And happy to answer any questions.
Anybody have any questions for Russell?
Don't have any.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Rocky, did you want to talk?
Good morning. Good morning. Rocky Temple, Single Member, District 6. Just to reunite what Russell said was, where it says permanent standards on that, number four. In the past, it's always been temporary and approved surface basically by the fire department is the more concern that they have something that they can pull their rig up on or turn around or republic trash trucks and so on. I don't have a problem if need to be giving the city a easement or a right of way for that land, for that temporary turnaround, because it is in the ETJ. It hasn't been annexed. And so, but I don't have a problem doing that. I think Aaron's working on that, that I might have to sign something for that. But yeah, as far as it being permanent standards, we do not want to do that. The costs have gone up enough as it is. If I have to put that in, then when I come back and want to continue the street, I'm going to have to tear it out. And it wouldn't be just one street. It would end up being about five streets. So then it just wouldn't be feasible. Thank you.
Makes sense. Is there any other public comment?
That's it.
Okay. So we'll close public comment and open up for discussion. I think, everybody understand what their request is?
He just, the word permanent standards for street and alley is, he didn't, the word permanent would indicate curbs and gutters. So could we, motion to number four's recommendation?
Hang on one second, Candy.
We, we may want the city engineer to come talk to that language, but I think permanent is referring to the, the paving surface of the cul-de-sac or the turnaround.
Yes, sir.
Well, it says temporary turnaround shall be constructed.
The other section of the ordinance that was referred to, which I believe is Chapter, yeah, 5 or 5?
5, Section 6.
Section 6, Phase 6. Speaks to a phased development. A phased development is defined as any development which is part of a larger preliminary plat like this one. In that section of the ordinance, it speaks to a subdivision being self-sufficient on its own, this portion, the phased portion. So when you add a little part of it, that should have circulation as if it were a permanent subdivision. Circulation through an alley is not considered normal circulation for a subdivision. That is a bit of a conflict in our ordinances. Conventionally, we have allowed that to happen. So we are working currently on a revision to that ordinance, which I'm sure you guys will get an opportunity to look at, at a later date, which will close that loophole. Both sections, this section and the section referred to by Russell in Chapter 9, require construction to permanent standards. The only difference being that in section, in Chapter 9, it speaks to the absence of curb and gutter. Permanent standards is going to be asphalt or concrete. Any other questions?
How wide does that have to be for that turnaround?
How wide does it need to be for the turnaround?
Temporary turnarounds are, in Chapter 9, are referred to then what are considered permanent dead-end streets, which we don't like. Also be revising that portion. It refers to three different types being available, which is a cul-de-sac, a hammerhead, or a T-type. Fire apparatus, roads don't have anything to do with road construction. That's a safety consideration from the fire department. The fire marshal can speak to that. The ordinance is for road construction are as specified.
Okay.
So if we revise to reference Section 5, Chapter 5, Section 6, is that accomplishing the same thing that you guys want it to protect versus what Russell is?
Personally, I'm not, I don't think we're opposed to having no curb and gutters along this turnaround. We're, we're, I think, capitulating.
Yeah, that's consistent with the ordinance, I think.
Conventional application of the ordinance and interpretation would permit this, unfortunately, this, this circumstance where you have a street converted to an alley, which provides circulation for traffic, which is not the best of circumstances for a subdivision, for a residential subdivision. But because of past traditional interpretations of these somewhat conflicting ordinances, we're willing to move ahead with that, as long as those turnarounds are paved. There's no telling how long it's going to be before the continuation of this, that phased development occurs.
Okay. Anybody else have anything? Okay. Any other questions?
No, sir.
I don't think so. Thank you. Sorry to derail you, Candy. I felt like we needed to, just to make sure we're clear on all that.
So I, I just, could, could we also throw in there if they got permission from the fire marshal's office on a temporary? I mean, that's the whole point of that turnaround is for circulation. And yet, the alley is not technically a, an area for that, that's designed for that technically, correct? Just, I'm just asking.
Correct. And I think that what the city engineer is saying is an alleyway is not designed for regular street traffic. And while we have very, every faith and confidence, this developer's not going to walk away, but we have to plan as if someone were to walk away. How do we circulate traffic if they were to walk away? And I think in this case, we are, are willing to go back to what our, what we have done with our normal standards and then evaluate our subdivision ordinance and saying, okay, we, we don't think this needs curb and gutter in that temporary turnaround. And this design satisfies our intent at this time.
Yeah. I just, if you pave it, it's going to be circulating, because people are going to go through it. You, you know what I'm saying?
Yes, I think there's a.
If it's temporary, just for the fire department, then they're less likely to use it as much.
It really is.
Not that we want to detour or not detour it. I'm just, again, throwing that out there. It's going to be demolished one day. We don't know when, because we, we don't.
Correct, because that's going to be a future lot in the future to extend that to the west.
I'm throwing a lot of kinks and things on. I'm throwing kinks and things on.
All right.
Okay, I'll, I'll, I'll take a shot at it. I vote, or I moved to, oh God, where did we go? To approve the plat with the temporary standards for turnarounds pursuant to the current subdivision ordinance.
Okay. We have a motion. We have a second?
Second.
Okay. A motion from Liz and a second from Candy. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
Aye.
All right. 3-1. And we will move on to Number 4, FP 2506, Preston Wood, Section 10, SMD number 6. A request to final plat, Preston Wood Edition, Section 10, being 10.414 acres located west of Pendleton Parkway and extending Pinion Ridge Drive.
Thank you, Chairman. This is Preston Wood, Section 10. It's an extension of Pinion Ridge right here, coming out to the west. So this is the bottom part of the Preston Wood area. It's in the neighborhood of Bonham. It's District 6, Mr. District 6, Mr. Larry Miller. It is undergoing a zoning process with city council right now to obtain the RS1 single-family residential. And the vision plan, plan is neighborhood. So again, down here, this area really stops about right in here. So just, just bear with us. You can see here it is at extension and where Brighton Hill dissects it there. Pinion Ridge is a minor collector, so it is just a little bit wider coming through here, but then single-family style houses coming off of them, as well as an alleyway here to the north of the block with the temporary turnaround. And so very similar to the last plat, we would work with the applicant to work through what the, if, if there's any issues of, get this to move forward. They are looking at this area right here as their detention, which this kind of connects to one of the arms of the, of the Reta Royal that goes back towards Loop 306. With that, city staff recommends approval with the six conditions. I, I think Ms. Albert's wording in the last plat for Number 4 is appropriate again on this plat. And again, this one just has the condition about, obtain the final zoning at city council. With that, I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Anybody have any questions for Aaron? Okay. So we'll, we'll do a public comment, right?
Russell with SKG would just ask the same for, the same condition four on this one as, as previously discussed and happy to answer any questions on this one.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Rocky Temple, Single Member, District 6. Yeah, going back to what we were just talking about, all the engineers in the past have let us sign a deal or they've given us a deal saying that we can use limestone and do a temporary turnaround. You know, if I have to pave that temporary turnaround, spend additional $30,000, I mean, you're looking another $1,000 a lot going up. My lot cost from the previous section to this section, which didn't have paved turnarounds, have already gone up 100% because of detention ponds. And so when you're talking about affordable houses, you're talking about because of the city sewer, water, streets, curb and gutter, and detention ponds that I have to put in, that my lots are going to be $80,000 apiece. The last section, they were $40,000 apiece. So the affordability is going out the window. And it's just one more item by interpretation of the code that we have to pave that. And so that's another reason why I don't mind putting down limestone. It is temporary. Been over there in Preston Wood since '07. We're going on 270 homes that we built over there. And so I don't really understand the purpose of having to pave that to turn around and tear it up to put the next section in. Thank you.
I think from the city's point of view, because we don't know what development will happen later or if it'll happen, yes, I think he intends to develop it and it would be torn up. And so I can see that argument. But the city doesn't know that once this is filed and the subsequent plat isn't filed. So we have to have some protection. I think we could do like a performance agreement, just like we do some of our other improvements that would defer that for a while. And so.
That was going to be my, my suggestion also.
Yeah. I mean, I think we could do that. And that way, it wouldn't have to be done immediately. And again, he would give a financial guarantee to construct that. And it would be based on a certain period of time. And I mean, that might accomplish what he needs.
Yeah.
So in the last one that we did just a moment ago with Chapter 5, Section 6 of the current ordinance, that would mean paving?
Yeah. Those sections also refer to performance agreement. So I think either way, we can do that even on the last one also.
Okay, all right. Yeah.
Okay. How would we word that? I think, I think the way we approved the last one would accomplish that, right? If a, if a performance agreement is already a lot, I mean, it would just give the latitude to negotiate with the city.
Right.
So I think this one's very similar.
Okay, so I'll make a motion to approve the, the plat pursuant to the temporary standards allowed under the land development subdivision. allowed under the land development subdivision ordinance.
Motion by Liz.
Second.
And a second by Candy. All in favor?
So, real quick, before we vote, this still allows for that performance agreement.
Okay, because that's in the actual code itself, it talks about the performance agreement.
Okay, alright.
Yeah, sorry, I should have asked for discussion.
That's alright, no, you're good.
Is there any further discussion? So, I'll call for a vote, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Four zero.
All right, last subdivision plat is RP 2505, Baker Ranch, section six, SMD number one, a request to replat Baker Ranch, Lot 56, Block 1, section six, being 2.505 acres located west of Caroline Lane and extending Blair Lane to the west intersecting with Vista del Arroyo, Vista del Sol Drive.
Got it.
Thank you, Chairman. Aaron Benoy, Director of Planning Development Services. This is kind of a cleanup item, kind of a replat here in this corner, to help the development continue to move forward and designate some detention area. This is neighborhood in the Country Club, District 1, Mr. Tommy Hebert. Current zoning in this area is RS1 single-family residential, and it is the neighborhood vision plan. So, this, again, kind of turns it just a little bit, but here's Vista del Sol Drive that comes, and then turns into Blair Lane at this intersection. This was, as you previously saw on the other, was potentially going to come through and come this way, but then, the detention area back here, this drainage easement area, has been created, and so this was one lot, they're creating two lots out of it, 56A and 56B, so B is the large lot, 56A is still a buildable lot here, we believe, for them in the future to add a single-family residential item there. So, that's really the only change in this corner, you can kind of see where preliminary addressing had shown that, okay, it may go around in that area, it just does, it's just not working with the type of development that they're doing. But with that, everything seems to be meeting our subdivision ordinance, staff recommends approval, and the only condition is a tax certificate at this time for that, for that property. Any questions?
Anybody have any questions on that one for Aaron? Thank you, Aaron. Do we have any public comment, Ray?
Prestonwood.
All right, I think that's it, right? Okay, so we'll close public comment and open up for discussion. Everybody understand the situation with this one, which is really heated up by detention?
Yeah.
So, I'll open it up for a motion or further discussion?
Make a motion to approve as presented by staff.
Second.
Okay, got a motion, and a second to approve as presented. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Four zero. And that is it, so I'll turn it over to Aaron for Planning Director's report.
Thank you, Chairman. First, just want to say thank you to all of you guys that were able to make it last week, for the joint city council and planning commission meeting. I believe it went very well, I'm very pleased with our work together, and to bring forth some items to city council that we believe is going to help our community in the long term. I also want to say thank you to our city staff, as you saw with their presentations today, Ray Lineberry, Austin Reed, Kim Garminy, there's also a member that's actually housing, or that's taking care of customers over there, she did a number of these cases today, Karen Putnam. They've done a really great job putting together cases, and putting together presentations to explain things, clearly not only to this board, but to our citizens as well. They do a great job working with them every single day. We couldn't have made the last three months work without them doing the hard work that they do, and the extra hours that they spend, so I really appreciate the work that they all do and put in. Other than that, summertime's coming, as we heard this morning, there are some items in our subdivision ordinance that we need to look at and start kind of maybe cleaning up, so that we get into some conformance, and making sure that we're looking at them all aligned to what we need to for our comprehensive plan and our zoning ordinance. The other things that we heard this morning is talking about affordable housing. We know that our zoning ordinance from 2000 is a little bit limited in lot sizes, maybe in availability of how things could construct, but we think we need to form some groups, possibly some members from our planning commission, certainly members from our development community, to sit on a committee to look at affordable housing, and what could we do within our current zoning ordinance to assist certain areas of town to start developing in a little bit different way. So if anybody has any interest in that, please feel free to contact me, because we think we are going to start something this summer. It may not come to fruition until next year at this time, but we really want to think through it and see what really works for different areas of our community. Other than that, we're continuing to see development, it is staying strong in our community, we're very excited about that, we hope it continues to stay strong. Our staff members have been working very hard on our new software system, in fact, two of them are going to be coming online here soon, one of them is called our community development software. It will be where all the community development members can share information, so it makes decision-making better, and so that we don't have relying on one piece of software here, another piece of software there, data that may not be shared amongst each other. This is designed to share it amongst all decision-makers. And then the other thing is our Granicus software, which is our short-term rental software, it's coming forward. We hope to have, maybe in May, if not in June, a report of what it can do, and maybe a short demonstration of how it works. But again, that's going to provide a 24-hour hotline for citizens to call about short-term rentals. They're also checking in on those short-term rentals that may have not come into compliance for various reasons, whether it's they didn't get their conditional use, or they didn't pay their hot taxes, and so we're very excited about that, assisting us in helping our community to get better with our short-term rentals. Ray Lineberry and Karen Putnam are in the heat of doing renewals, and so we're very excited about that, and we'll have a number of renewals that'll just take place in the administrative cycle, if there's anything there that needs to come forward, as we need to potentially revoke this conditional use, you may see those in May or June, and so we'll be letting you know how those things go. But other than that, I'm very, very pleased with our team, our permits team is doing fantastic, they're really working out in the field and seeing a lot of construction projects. Our development services are short-staffed right now, but they're, the application processing, but they're keeping up and doing really, really well as, for our customers that come in, and for our citizens that send us stuff. So we're very excited about how our department's going, and we continue to strive for our community. So, with that, I'll let you all ask any questions.
Thank you.
Yeah, and I just want to commend everybody, especially Aaron, for standing up at that joint meeting for several hours, and fielding questions from every direction, so I know that took a lot of work and a lot of outreach and community involvement, and so I think that was a big project, so, good, good job to everyone. So, does anybody have anything else that we need to discuss? I will, so I need to read our next meeting, the planning commission is scheduled to begin on Monday, May 19th, at 9:00 AM, right here in this room, so.
Chairman, if I may, I did miss out one team that really helped us a lot, they're in the background, they do stuff for us every single day of the week, but that's our legal team, Brandon and his team, they review all of our ordinances, they put together a lot of the packet, and without them giving their guidance, we would fall really short of the goal, and so Brandon and his team did a great job helping us, not only with those big ordinances, but with stuff that happens today. So, we really appreciate it, you guys helping us out.
Great, thank you. Okay, so with that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Shall I move? Second.
Candy and Joe, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And that will do it, it is 10:40.